August 16th, 2016, meeting of the Riverton City Council Finance Committee to order at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Motion for consideration of claims to be paid in amount of $412,348.12. Checks written for payroll and liabilities for August 5th in the amount of $226,103.86. And manual checks in the amount of $29,305.18 for a total, Madam Chairman, for a total of $707,757.16.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions on the bills?
I don't.
Okay, the only one that I had was for the Motorola stuff for the $62,000 or $60... Where did it go? Right there. $62,548.60. So is that all done now, or is that gonna be in stages?
Madam Chairman, we've been paying that in stages. That was one of the installments. And I'm not sure, they've been coming in basically in $35,000 installments. But I know that Gloria just applied to get, I think, $136,000 back through a grant. So I don't know if that's the last payment, but we're getting near the end. The equipment's all done. It's all been put in.
Do you like it?
You know, it's all just wires and switches to me, so.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And I just wanted to address something. I have had a few people ask me why our Finance Committee meetings are really short. And it's due to the fact that we have an amazing senior staff and staff that just, they do their jobs. They look through these numbers nonstop. We actually get the packets Thursday afternoon before the Tuesday meeting. And so I know that it was, there's a website online where there's an individual that watches the council member, or the council meetings across the United States, and he just kind of picks and chooses. And he didn't say some very nice things, and so I just kind of hope he's watching. And the fact that our Riverton City staff is absolutely amazing. And so we, as a Finance Committee, have the opportunity to ask questions, contact them whenever possible. They know the answers. If something is wrong or we have a concern, they're the first ones to say, let me take a look at it. So hopefully, he switches his mind and realizes that our minute, our meetings might only be like a minute or two long. But it is due to the fact that the Riverton City staff has this down, and they're very knowledgeable. We have passed all of our audits with flying colors. And so I think we really need to thank all of our senior staff and all of our staff in general, because they do a fantastic job. So thank you so much, guys, for making our jobs super easy. Okay?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Who was that person that made that comment?
I do not know his name. That's how.
Was he, is he a resident of Fremont County?
No.
Is he a resident of Wyoming?
No. So he has absolutely no idea.
Is he somewhere in the United States, back east?
Probably, yeah. We'll go with that. But if you'd like, I'd be more than happy to get his name for you.
Well, I wish you had forwarded me the information so I can direct him to the reasons why we're afloat in Detroit and Michigan aren't.
I agree. All right. Then if we have any other further business?
No further questions.
Meeting adjourned.
I now call the August 16th, 2016, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Peterson lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Larson will lead us in an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for this opportunity to serve the city of Riverton. Father, we had asked that Allah bless us with understanding and ability to do the right things for our fine citizens. Please bless this city and its occupants, that they might have the best from us. Father, we are thankful for the country that we live in, and the freedoms which we enjoy, and the peace which we have. We would ask that thou might continue in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Would the City Secretary please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present and declare that we have a quorum. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda with the removal of item number nine, the presentation regarding the Riverton Senior Center by Kristy Skinner.
Your Honor, make a motion that we approve the agenda striking item number nine from it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Let me explain that, that item number nine removal. Ms. Gibbon and I and Stephen Weaver had a good meeting today with Kristy Skinner. Her original idea was that she was gonna come and talk to the council. And we decided after that discussion that anything that she might have to say to us would be fairly shallow and premature. And so we're gonna put that off for a few weeks until some changes that are in the works have been brought to fruition with regards to the seniors. So then, at that time, she'll come back and we'll have an opportunity to discuss that. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item here is communication from the floor. Citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given opportunity to speak later on. And ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium. Identify yourselves for the record.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Burt. And Stephen Weaver said that you were gonna be speaking about what we were talking today, about the tables and chairs in front of La Compliments Cafe. Are we doing that?
We don't have an agenda item.
Oh, okay.
But you can bring it up under Citizens' Comments.
Okay. We have.
Could you get, crowd the mic a little bit?
Oh, get into it?
Yeah.
Okay. That's good. Okay. I have a restaurant, La Compliments Cafe, in Riverton, and we have four little tables outside with two chairs each. They've been there since April. And I just found out Saturday that Wydok had a problem with it, because we didn't have a, what is it called? An ordinance. There's no ordinance here on tables and chairs in front of the restaurant. So Stephen said they were gonna talk, you guys were gonna talk about it tonight, and I was just wondering, you know? I wanted to be here, 'cause I like my tables and chairs. I think they look cute. And we do business out there, so.
Okay, so we don't have an agenda item, okay? And that discussion came up today, was it? Okay, and so, you know, before we could talk, bring that up as an agenda item for council, you know, that would probably be the first week in September, would be the next meeting that we could actually put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, as an agenda item.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, well, if it gets any colder, I'll have to bring them in.
Right, right. It's a short season, right?
It's really a short season. It's funny, actually. So they won't, if we wait too long, they won't be out there until next year.
Yeah, well, we may be, okay, but to, if, you know, my understanding is that if we were to draft an ordinance.
Right.
Okay, did that affect, the process would be that the ordinance would have to get perfected, okay? Then it would be brought to council. We'd have to read it three times, okay? So that's a six weeks, over a six-week period of time.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're into October, all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so if, if the City Council was a minimal to that, then we're looking at tables and chairs ordinance for you next summer.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, you bet.
Good evening. I think most of you know who I am. Jim Davis with the Chamber of Commerce. I got a couple items for you this evening. The new Riverton brochure, hot off the press. Thought I'd bring it by and let you look at it and let you know that our lodging tax is working. It's similar to the last one. It's just different colors and updated and a few different pictures. Since I've been at the Chamber, we've gone through 20,000 of these, and this is the net, this is 10,000 we just ordered. So it'll take a couple of years, but we use them in everything that we send out and hand out and wherever we can put them.
Okay.
So I wanted to bring it to your attention, let you see it.
Okay.
In fact, there's some in the rack out front already. I brought them by this morning.
Okay.
And then the next thing, even though my term on the lodging tax board has expired, I'm still kind of hanging in there, because it takes a little time to turn it all over, since I was the treasurer and actually got two extra years out of it that I probably shouldn't have. But I filled the previous person's term, and then that's six years after that. But a number of years ago, I guess a year ago, we decided as a board that we needed to bring to the governing bodies a report twice a year instead of once a year on how the local lodging tax percentage that Riverton had received, and Lander, and Dubois, and Shoshone, and Hudson, and where we were at. And so that's what this spreadsheet is. And on the backside, these were, these were all the awards, the yellow are, are all the awards that were asked for. The green was what was granted. And then the far right column is what's been paid out so far as of today. So if you flip it over and look at the back, you can see that there was $148,481 worth of requests. We granted $121,477.10. And as of today, we've handed out, or reimbursed, $74,768.26. Remaining balance of that $121,477 is $46,708.84. And right now, as of today, in the account is $73,387.5. And so this is a fluid account, and so there's money always coming in. Every two months, we get a check. So we're already building for this next grant period.
So how often do you look at projects for grants?
I only look at them, well, I look at them mostly in February. Now, if something comes along during the year that may be something that we should look at, we'll look at it. But normally, we try to only do it once a year. Each community handles it a little bit differently. I know Lander, once they shut the door on it, they don't open it back up for another year. But I think sometimes that's a little too harsh. And if something would come along and we would need to help them to have it succeed, we probably need to look at it at least. And I actually had to cut them all 10% this year, because the requests were so much more. And then this next year, it's gonna be a little bit more than that, because the Riverton's percentage, it's paid back to, well, let me explain the whole process. We take 25% of the lodging tax that's collected and pay it back to the five joint powers partners. Riverton, Lander, Dubois, Hudson, and Shoshone. Hudson and Shoshone get a stipend. Hudson doesn't even have a tax collector. Shoshone does, but they wouldn't collect enough to help anybody out over there in one year to do anything. So they're paid back to Riverton, Lander, and Dubois in the percentage that it's collected in that community. So last year, these figures, was actually from the year before, we got 52% of that in Riverton, of that 25%. Ours has gone down 10%, and Lander and Dubois has gone up. And I think that's because there's not as many working people staying in the motels in Riverton right now. And so it's gonna be down a little bit more even for us in this next year, so. Just not as much to hand out, I guess. We're facing that at every, every turn, aren't we? So anyhow, any questions about it? I mean, it, it does let a lot of festivals and organizations and bring people to town for all kinds of things. As you can see, you know? And some of you might question, you know, what, for instance, the one that I had somebody question me about the other day was the Wyoming Avian Rescue. What do they do? Well, they did a carnival during rendezvous up at the college. So there was something else for somebody to do in Riverton while they were here visiting. So it helps them pull that off, you know?
Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Appreciate, appreciate all you do. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Would the Finance Director please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, August 2nd, 2016, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, August 16th, 2016, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations, August 16th, 2016. Approval of the Municipal Court report for July 2016.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for bills to be paid in the amount of $412,348.12. Checks written for payroll liabilities for 8/5/16 in the amount of $266,103... And manual checks in the amount of $29,305.18 for a total of $707,757.16.
Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as written. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises and Wex items on the finance agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. Next item is item number 10, Central Wyoming Skateboard Association Lighting Permit Request. Chief of Police, report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 27th, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, the Central Wyoming Skate Association would like to have an event at the Tyler Ray Alveda Skate Park in City Park, and they'd like to bring in some portable lighting to do that. I've included a copy of the city ordinance about closing the parks at dark, but they can have that event with your permission. And so I'm here with them to ask permission for them. The Police Department is one of the co-sponsors of the event, along with several of the area's local businesses and some private organizations. And so we'll have police officers present during the event, and they haven't done that before. And there are no rules promulgated by this council for them to do lighting events, and so we're just here to ask for permit for that evening.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the skate park having their event.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor.
I'm sorry, Your Honor? I was, I was reading. Sorry, I'm slow.
Okay.
What kind of event is it? Is it a, is it gonna bring people in from around the state for a competition? Or is it gonna be, I don't know if, Matt, if you wanna share a little bit with us about it, just so we, we kind of know what we're saying yes to?
Yeah, thanks. I'll turn my phone off. Mayor, council, yeah, this will be a one-of-a-kind event so far. We haven't done one like this. It's an anti-bullying, anti-drug and alcohol event, co-sponsored by Fremont Therapy, I mean, excuse me, Fremont Counseling. And it's, it is a competition, but throughout the event, we'll have different speakers from the Police Department, a kind of a question and answer session. Some of the kids are always asking me, well, what do we do in this situation if this guy's being mean? Or, you know, we have this situation. So we're hoping to educate, and we'll have free T-shirts that say bullying stops with me. And some, so some of that. And, yeah, shout out to Ace Hardware. They're helping out a ton. And it just, it's been a great, and the Police Department, of course, is helping this financially. There are a lot of BMXers and skateboarders from around the state who are excited about coming, so that answers that. We, at our last competition during Day in the Park, we had 37 competitors, and 25 of them are from out of town. So it's definitely a park that's attracting people to come from all over, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Matt, what type of lighting are we putting up there?
We've got an LED lighting system that roughly, well, the lighting in the poles themselves is about $12,000. And then the extra work for the concrete bases. And I've already submitted our foundation plans to Kyle, the Public Works Director, and we're still in the process of getting a plan to talk to Sandy and Dave about getting the construction permits, electrical permits. We have a master electrician on board that'll help, volunteer his time. Construction in the park, we're hoping we can start in September, in the middle of September, probably. We're hoping to have a Halloween event to have lights, and that'll be hopefully the permanent lights I'm talking. This event will be a temporary lighting that we just bring in on little trailers there. Doug, do you have any details on what exactly they are? Running them from Jiffy, kind of construction lights?
Yeah, they, they call them light plants. They run on diesel. And we're getting two of them for the event, and to cover, you know, 11,000 square feet. We think that ought to be adequate for this event. And it's kind of a test, see what it's gonna be like, lit up at night. And, but the cause is an excellent cause, and that's why we've got so much backing. We have a lot of sponsors. And I've given the Police Chief a little flyer for all of you, so you can see what it's about. But it's, it's called "I Ride Clean," and that's about drugs and alcohol. And then we have the anti-bullying stuff as well. It's kind of split in between. And counselors from Fremont Counseling will be doing some of the speaking. We're trying to get somebody from the Rendezvous Middle School to speak about bullying. It's really gonna be a good event. And the kids get the free T-shirts that are actually dual-function. They're glow-in-the-dark, and they have the logo on it. So not only will they have a anti-drug, anti-bullying logo, but it's also for safety at night. You're gonna see those kids from a mile away, I hope, if they're out in the street riding their bikes or skateboards. So it's a really gonna be a great event, and one of our best, I think, so far.
We officially invite all of you to come, too.
And the date again, Matt?
August 27th. It's about two Saturdays from now, and it starts at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes. The next item is Resolution Number 1343, Airport Improvement Project, 42, 42, grant agreement? Did I say that right? Public Works Director, report.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the second AIP grant to come before you this year. This is for the improvements to the ARF building. As you remember, we are on a schedule to replace our ARF truck. That truck has already been awarded. However, in order to procure this truck, we also have to make modifications to our current ARF building. This grant specifically pertains to those modifications. We've worked with JAVIATION to develop plans and specifications for these improvements, and have already advertised this project for bid. Bids will be open tomorrow at 1:00. FAA officials have been proactive, and they've issued us a draft grant for your review and approval. We have to designate basically through resolution someone to sign and execute the grant. This is very similar, again, to the one we've already brought to you about a month ago. The FAA does fund this at a percentage of 93.75% with this grant. The remaining portion of this ARF building improvement will be paid for by the State of Wyoming and the City of Riverton at 3.75% and 2.5%, respectively. Once bids are open, we'll have an understanding of the costs. We will then work with the FAA directly. They want to turn this grant around fairly quickly. And so by taking this draft agreement to you now by ordinance, that allows to execute this grant in a timely manner. As far as a budget impact, again, we'll come As far as a budget impact, again, we'll come to you for a bid award at the next council meeting, but this will allow us to enter into agreement with the FAA for that 93.75. Mr. Rick Saunders has reviewed the agreement and is in favor of the execution. Thank you, Your Honor. And again, this is Resolution Number 1343.
Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve Resolution 1343.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bailey.
Kyle, do we have a guesstimate of what we're talking here, and have we done anything with this year's budget regarding setting some money aside for that?
Your Honor, we have this project fully budgeted this year pursuant to the projections that we have. We're all crossing our fingers. I asked staff on Monday to cross their fingers for good bids. We received excellent bids on our ARF truck. We're hoping to have the same on this one.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, project. The force recommendation. Public Works Director, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The item before you is some proactive planning on the part of staff and the force committee, and also for the consideration of the City Council. As you remember, the City of Riverton applied for a TAP grant one year ago. The grant centered on improvements for crosswalks and crossing safety. With the application that was approved by Resolutions 1320 and 1321, the council approved for the installation of 33 ADA ramps and eight flashing crosswalk signals. This grant application at the time was for $147,500. $115,500 was requested for the ADA ramps, and $32,000 was requested for the installation of flashing crosswalk signals. TAP grants are distributed at a funding ratio of 80/20. Consequently of that, $147,500. TAP would fund a total of $118,000, and the city would fund a total of $29,500. For the city's 20% portion, the City Council approved the use of 1% monies. Cost estimates for the flashing crosswalk portion were established by soliciting informal quotes for the actual hardware costs of the flashing crosswalk signals. After researching several vendors, it was determined that we could install two flashing crosswalk singles... Signals, excuse me, at one location for $8,000. Multiply that by four locations, that's how we came up with the $32,000 cost estimate. Again, that's only hardware. We believe that city staff can install those. They're solar-powered, and we'd like to save some money that way. And that's how our application reflected for TAP. The cost estimate for the ADA portion was established by averaging our average ADA ramp cost last construction season. We did a few ADA projects, and so we took the lump sum average to remove and replace one ADA ramp, and came up with a range from $2,304 to $4,760 to replace... Remove and replace one ADA ramp. From that information, staff projected for this grant application a per-ramp cost of $3,500. And for the 33 locations, we just multiplied 3,500 to come up with our total of $115,500. So, with the resolutions passed on the 21st of July, YDOT returned information to the City of Riverton on October 12th, 2015, that we received temporary conditional approval from TAP for this project. A notice to proceed for preliminary engineering was not issued for another six months from YDOT administrators, and that was on March 16th, 2016. Once we received that notice to proceed to perform preliminary engineering for this project, staff solicited an RFQ from contractors, engineering firms, I should say, and on April 5th, 2016, council approved staff's recommendation to select Inberg Miller engineers for the design of this project. After preliminary plans and specifications were prepared for the TAP project, Inberg Millers, excuse me, engineers provided city staff a cost estimate of $269,394 just for the ADA portion of the project. This estimate overruns the original estimate for the ADA portion by $153,894. It's important to, again, remember, these are cost estimates and not hard costs at this time. We will only know the cost for these improvements when we put it out to bid. However, with that significant difference, staff wanted to make sure we brought to council's attention early, and more importantly, our force committee early. So, with the estimate overrun, staff has developed a few alternative options to basically determine the best position to move forward. We have taken these options to the force committee on two different occasions. We took it in the July meeting and discussed it heartily, and then also in our August meeting. In those discussions, this was what was presented. One option to address this overrun is to receive approval from the City Council to expend additional 1% monies on the project. Currently, the ADA portion of the project is slated to be funded by the state at $92,400 and $23,100 by the 1% fund. That's that 80/20 split based off of the application. Should future bids come in near the estimate of Inberg Miller, then the contributing portion of the 1% fund would need to be increased to $176,994. The second option explored with the force committee by staff was to bid the project in two schedules. By breaking the project into two different schedules, City Council would have the option at the time of bid award to award one schedule or both schedules. If costs came in significantly high, you could award one schedule and keep the project within a manageable budget. We have already spoken with TAP administrators about this option. They said that, yes, this is something you can consider. You will need to work with us to establish the base bid and the alternate bid. Staff proposes that the base bid will be the ADA ramp improvements along Sunset. That is a corridor that needs improvement. And then the alternate would be the ADA ramps on Monroe that lead towards the new school, basically between the city shop and the new school location. The third option was to work with YDOT and TAP administrators to reduce the scope of the project. This one gets a little complicated. We have not received a definite answer from TAP administrators yet, but because TAP funds are tied to federal highway administration monies, it's difficult and challenging to change the scope after it's already been approved. Basically, the FHWA has approved the scope that's been proposed, and to reduce that, we would then have to go through a process potentially receiving a smaller grant amount. Should that be the direction council wants to explore, we will continue to work with TAP administrators to work through those logistics. The fourth option we talked... We discussed with force was to discontinue the project, finalize payment for... With Inberg Miller for the work that they have performed, and walk away. If this option is explored, we will have to return the awarded grant monies back to the State of Wyoming. At its August meeting, after considering these options, and again, this was considered during the July meeting as well, force unanimously approved a motion recommending the City Council authorize the use of 1% funds to complete the project. As part of the motions, force also recommended that staff bid the project in two schedules in order to provide the City Council the most options possible once the project is bid. So, to talk about budget impacts for that recommendation, again, based on the estimate provided by Inberg Miller engineers, the contribution from the 1% fund for this TAP project needs to be increased from $23,100 to $176,994. TAP would still contribute $92,400 for the ADA portion of this project. The flashing crosswalk portion of the project would still be funded by TAP and the 1% fund at a ratio of $25,600 and 60... Excuse me, $6,400. Here's the good news. Bids thus far this construction season have all come in under budget. From that surplus of the good bids we've received, we have $85,567 unattributed currently that we can put towards this potential overrun. The 1% fund currently has a balance of $2,725,542. After subtracting project obligations, including the pending obligation for North Federal and including the recommendation from force, we still have a 1% unencumbered balance to carry forward into the future construction season of $223,781. So, basically, we have funds in the 1% account to cover this potential overage. We can also utilize the savings from all the other bids that we've done this current construction season to work towards this potential overrun. If I read your mind, the question that has not been answered is, why the difference? And at this time, I don't have a solid answer for you, other than to say that these are estimates. With the project being funded by the federal highway administration, there is a requirement to follow federal guidelines. This includes payment of Davis Bacon wages, and then also a few administrative processes and overhead costs. What does that mean? We have to work through the bid document process that the federal government has established, so we can't utilize our bid documents. We have to utilize bid documents approved by the federal government. More importantly, we also have to make sure that we comply with Clean Water Act regulations. City of Riverton is not currently under Phase 1 regulations, but because of the federal tie to these monies, we have to put in line items for the stormwater pollution prevention program. When we spoke with Inberg Miller about potentially returning the TAP funds and just bidding this project separately, we thought maybe we could save money by only doing it per-city standards and not federal standards. After their analysis, they only came up with a $10,000 savings from their original estimate. When we look at how we've been bidding projects, again, I walked through how we established the estimate for the grant proposal a year ago. We have actually solicited lump-sum bids for ADA ramp improvements, and this year, we still fell within that range. In fact, from the three contractors we solicited for the Pioneer ADA Improvement Project, one ADA ramp, and this is lump-sum removal and replacement, complete, was ranging between $1,900 and $3,500. So, why the difference? It's tough to say until we go to bid. The Inberg Miller estimate is broken out by line item and quantities that potentially could have increased the cost because we had to include line items for landscape restoration, stormwater control. The scope of the project is larger than some of these smaller ones, so for 33 ADA ramps, you have a significant increase for traffic control costs. So, I specifically left the why question out of the staff report because I do not have a good answer for you at this time, other than I know city staff went through their due diligence in preparing the cost estimate for the application, and I have confidence in Inberg Miller engineers as well. Staff, again, is trying to bring this to you in a proactive manner so that when we do put this to bid, we have an understanding that there could be a potential overrun. And more importantly, we need to assure TAP administrators that the city is committed to contribute to its share of the project. The State of Wyoming has encumbered funds for this grant. They gave that to us and award. We were, I think, the second priority. They want to prioritize crosswalk safety, and so they need to have an assurance also that the city is willing to continue despite the potential difference between our estimate and our consultants. I know this is a lot of information, but this is something that I feel needs to be discussed because of the large discrepancy between the two estimates. I'd be happy to field any questions at this time from the council or the mayor. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Morrison?
After giving us that lengthy discussion, what's your best choice?
Your Honor, I agree with the force recommendation. These are estimates at this time.
No, 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 Kyle. I want, what is your best guess? What do you feel? After you've looked at it, do you feel that we should go out and get a bid on A and B and see if we can conclude those, or whether we should have A or B? What do you feel?
If I understand the question correctly, I feel that it would be a mistake to turn back the TAP funds. I feel that we will need to utilize those to complete the project. My feeling is, we will probably receive bids higher than what the staff estimate was. We did not include the federal overhead and the Davis Bacon wages in our estimate at the time of the application. At the time of bid, the City Council still has the option to reject all bids, so this does not tie you to any funds. It just allows us to move forward in the process.
Mr. Bailey.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Martin.
I guess my question is, is that, like, your option number two, where it says you would split it up into two bids, but yet option number three says that you're not sure whether you can do any additions or deductions from already approved scope, so if you split it up into two portions, and let's say number one comes back and we say, yep, we'll do portion number one, and then number two comes back and we say, nope, it's too expensive, isn't that what number three is talking about, that you can't... You can't lessen the scope of the project once it's started?
In a way, yes, but also no at the same time, because we will receive approval from TAP administrators to break it into two schedules. With option two, there's still an option of including the entire project, and so we still have to work through the technicalities of getting their approval to break it into base and alternate bids. But by having the option of just the two schedules, you still can award the entire scope of the project, whereas with option three, you're taking the scope of the project and reducing it down altogether without the option of making it whole to the original scope application.
So, in option number two, then I'm still locked into buying the whole thing? Or can I...
No, you're not locked in, because they would have given us prior approval, and when I say they, TAP administrators, give you prior approval for the base and alternate bid schedules.
And then, again, Kyle, if I remember some of the conversation we had in the force committee, when we do these street projects, Sunset Monroe, for example, are we not required to do some of these ADA improvements with... Sort of, not necessarily in the same bid as the project, but aren't we required federally to do some of these ADA improvements anyway?
Your Honor, Councilman Bailey, that is correct. Pursuant to ADA law, anytime we want to do an overlay or major street improvement, we have to improve ADA ramps in order to be compliant. So, that's why on the projects we have done, for example, the Broadway Monroe, last year we improved ADA and drainage. This year, we did the overlay. So, yes, it is a federal requirement to do ADA ramp improvements.
So, just to make sure that I understand this, it looks to me like where there's an overage on the cost, the TAP grant doesn't cover that at all. So, the city's hanging out for any overage. In other words, we've got a certain amount of money from TAP regardless.
Your Honor, that's correct. They will fund 80% of the original request for $147,000 and change. Another option we explored early on was to act... Ask TAP administrators if we could just make another application this year as part of the grant applications, and they said, no, you can't. You can't supplement a previous grant with a new grant. We said, darn. But that put us to the point where we do have to cover the overage, whatever it may come in at.
Mr. Martinez.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're asking for is approval to go ahead and ask TAP to give us the approval for option one and two?
Your Honor, yes, let me just make sure I clarify. All city staff is asking from the force recommendation is that the City Council approves additional expenditures from the 1% fund toward this project. It's basically like we're going through a budget process right now. We've put together our estimates. There's a discrepancy in the estimate, so we want to make sure that we can show TAP that the City Council is okay with budgeting extra funds in the 1% account so that we can proceed forward, put this thing to bid, and then... funds in the 1% account, so that we can proceed forward, put this thing to bid, and then obviously go through our analysis at that point. So, this is simply asking the council to approve an additional expenditure of 1% funds, whatever it may be.
Thank you. Mr. Canaan.
One last question. I guess, in, what projects out of your wish list, let's say, in worst case, that you wind up spending the additional money, what wish list item are you going to lose when you spend an extra $153,000 on this, that you're not going to have available the rest of this year to do something?
Your honor, my wish list is rather lengthy, but as far as what we will lose, I think we'll be in a good position because of the bids we've received thus far. This really, again, if we look at the attachments, because of the savings, we're looking at an impact outside of what we projected of $68,000. That's a substantial amount of money, I understand. When we look at our next construction season, we're really committed to North Federal. We were hoping to also do another project with the Force recommendation, that could have been a chip seal, an overlay, but with the balance that we have, and this is today, that's, we will still accrue funds month over month moving forward, but right now, we have that $200,000 and change balance that's unencumbered completely, that's sufficient to do another project. So, yes, we will have to reprioritize that $68,000 that we weren't expecting to put towards this project, and in total, that's $174,000 or whatever thousand dollars we weren't expecting to spend, but we are still in a position where we can take care of utilities on North Federal. We've done our planning, we've put money aside for that, and then we still have a balance to produce projects next summer outside of even the North Federal utilities.
Your honor, I guess, I think, again, the option of breaking the bid into two separate pieces gives us the most flexibility when we do get the bids and see what those numbers come in at. I think it gives us the most flexibility to do what we need to do, and that, again, we'll have another chance to run this up the flagpole and see how we all think, but assuming the bids come in better than expected, like they have been, we can approve it, and if they come in too high, we can approve half and, you know, go on and work for Monroe the next year, or whatever, you know, that could be the one we do next year, try to get another grant, whatever we want to do. But I think this is our best option moving forward, and we got to just put the bids out there and see what hap, what we get, and so that would be my recommendation, that we approve doing this.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes.
Your honor, we need a motion.
Oh, we didn't get a motion on that yet? We've just been discussing it all this time?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man, well, give me a motion.
Give me a motion.
I would move that we approve, moving forward, with option two. Is that how you stated it? The option to break the bid into two separate pieces, so that in the future, we have the ability to choose one or both, and give the mayor approval to sign that. That's what we need to do.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second.
Your honor, I have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but all you're asking for tonight is the approval of the 1% sales tax money, right?
Your honor, Councilman Martinez, that is correct. That's a critical component where we just want to get approval to expend the additional monies in the 1%. As part of that motion, we could also put in the bidding of two different schedules. That was what Force recommended as well.
I would amend my motion to state it that way.
Did you get that?
Give me a second.
Uh-huh.
Who seconded it?
Me.
Holly seconded it. Is that?
Oh, yeah, I still second.
Okay, you still second that?
I'm still going with it.
Okay, so we have a motion. Okay, now we do have a motion.
You got that all down?
Thank you. And we've had, and we've had a lot of discussion. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, what?
How much is that going to raise, that Bacon wages? How much do you guess will raise the, possibly, the cost, knowing further well that all of our has been under? That we've, you've saved $90,000 total this year, yet with this federal mandate coming in, you feel it's going to put a thickener in the ointment? How much higher will that, do you feel, raise that, if it will?
Your honor, Councilman Larson, the Davis Bacon wages are already applied to the Inberg Miller estimate. What they communicated to us was that it was basically a $10,000 difference from...
$10,000 increase.
From what they...
So, if it were 20, it'd be 30.
Sure. And that's, again, these are estimates. The numbers we have from Inberg Miller include all of the federal requirements, including the Davis Bacon.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Okay. So, I assume the minutes will...
That'd be smoother than that.
Yeah, it'll be smoother than, smoother than the process here. I was, I've been discussing this long, I thought I had a motion already. Okay. All right, so the next item is open container permit application discussion, city administrators report.
Yes, your honor. As you know, at the last council meeting, this was brought up, and there was a majority of the council there that felt like they wanted to discuss this again. This stems from the original issue we had, where we had someone approach the council of getting an open container permit at, at the time of the meeting it had been advertised, and so we're just coming back to see if there wants to be a change, where we move it from council approval to staff approval. So, just a little bit of history, in the last, we've had it on the consent agenda for the last 18 to 20 months, and there's been little or no discussion or opposition. We don't have a lot of open container permits that come in front of the council. This year, we've had eight, and we had eight in 2015, and four in 2014, and so staff would just like some direction with the approval process. As currently stands, catering permits and malt beverage permits are approved or denied through the clerk's office, while open container permits are approved or denied by the council. Shifting the approval process to the city's clerk's office would create efficiency, both for the public and administration with regards to timing of submission and approval process. Few alternatives to consider, we can leave it the way it is, meaning it's going to go back and come in front of the council again. We can change the city code to allow the open container permits to be approved by the city clerk's office for already established liquor establishments. So, when I was thinking about this, the issue with Bar 10, there was some confusion, because we, they already had a liquor license, they already had a catering permit, and so you thought, well, why can't they just do that right outside their business? Well, it's because it's in a public street that makes it an open container. And so, some of the concerns initially for wanting the council to approve these was because we have people that are applying for liquor permits that are not regularly dealing with this at a regular basis, and it's in the city parks, and we want the public to have a chance to say yay or nay, or they got issues with that particular individuals. And so, that's an option, or just change the city code to allow all open container permits to be approved by the city clerk's office. And so, we're just bringing it back for discussion, since it was brought up at the last meeting, and would hope to have some outcome at the meeting to decide what we want to do here. Thank you.
Mr. Larson.
Have we ever had any public comment on, what's the record show for public comment against open, open container?
Your honor, the only one that I can remember, and I've been here five years, was a Bar 10, was one of their neighbors had come, where they'd, we'd approved him, without it being on the agenda, and he was concerned that, hey, this is supposed to be on the agenda, I had no idea this was going to be on there, and you approved it, and I would have had comments. That's the only one that I can remember in the last five years. There may have been others, but that's the only one I can think of right now.
Can I ask one more question? Go ahead.
Chief, do you see a problem in that? I mean, instead of having public, more smoother, do you see that you're adequately staffed to handle those?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe it's, from my perspective, it's not an issue of staffing for us, or even time. I support the council reviewing these public permits, so that you can retain control over who is allowed to have alcohol in our public spaces.
Mr. Canaan.
I kind of agree with the, with the chief, you know. My heartburn with the last time was, is that when we, when the council had this discussion six, eight, 10 months ago, you know, kind of the feeling at that time was, is that we didn't want somebody walking in and asking something five minutes before we had to make a decision. And then we promptly turn around and allow that to happen. So, again, I think we just need to be consistent. I think we'd also gotten a comment from somebody, if I remember correctly, wasn't there an open container permit for somebody who was going to have a birthday party in one of the parks?
Oh, yeah.
And somebody, again, had called with a concern, because it was a, was a birthday party for a minor, they were going to have an open container there, how were they going to concern, you know, control that the minors didn't, didn't have access to the alcohol? So, I think that the council needs to retain that, that capability to look at the open container permits, but I think we need to be consistent and say, if the council's going to take a look at it, then it needs to be just like a normal agenda item. It needs to come in on a time when we can look at it, send a friendly little email to Mr. Weaver, ask a question, get it back, and at the same time, have somebody out there in the public take a look at that and say, hey, they've, they've got a concern. I really have a heartburn with somebody walking in and using the, I'll say, the excuse of saying, oh, I didn't know. Well, he's, he's got a liquor license, he should know what the rule is. To not say that he doesn't have enough time, again, those, those events alive at five are planned well in advance, so, so nobody should be walking in and saying, oh, by the way, I need it approved in the next five minutes, because my event's happening at, you know, 8:00 tonight.
Your honor. Mr. Martinez.
I'm in favor of just leaving the permit process with the council the way it is, and I agree with Councilman Canaan, that we shouldn't arbitrarily just say, okay, because we said a president that we're going to rubber stamp everything that comes in, and I don't see that happening, and I don't, I don't want it to happen that way. So, I just want to leave it the way it is right now.
Ms. Gibbon.
My only concern is the fact that if they land on the third meeting that we have, because there's only actually two times that they can come, and we can make the decision to approve it, depending on when their event is, they may actually be waiting two or even almost three weeks before they're able to get in to do that. That's not fair to them, and we're telling them, okay, we want you to be honest, we want you to have a birthday party in the park, and you come and you got your permit. I mean, they can go in somebody's backyard and have that same birthday party and drink. I mean, they're trying to do the right thing. As far as the guy that was here, I, I'm sorry, I still stand by the fact that I'm glad we voted for it, due to the fact that he was humble about it, he said he made the mistake, he said he won't do it again. He honestly, truly thought. He didn't technically have to, he could have just continued on and said, well, I have a liquor permit, I'm good to go, and then dealt with the consequences afterwards. I think, I truly think the people that are coming to get the permits are the ones that are wanting to do the right thing anyways, so I don't understand, I guess, why you're making them jump through all these hoops, and if they have an event, just, you know, hey, families coming to town, want to do something, there's that opportunity that they're not going to have. I think the city, I think the staff would be able to say, yep, I think this is a good thing, if we start having problems, we can always go back and change it, but I don't think you're going to have that problem.
I just wholly disagree with that totally, but I think that we, as public, got to control the public drinking on public land, period. They can drink all they want in their own yard. I don't care.
Okay, so then, at city, at the city park, are you going to go down there and tell them you got to get a permit to drink down here?
Sure.
We don't do that.
Yes, we do.
Now, you're going to punish the ones that are doing right.
You can't drink in city park.
You're not supposed to, but they do.
Well...
So, the ones that are doing it, and they're trying to do it the right way, are, you're going to crucify them, but you're going to allow those guys to do it. At the end of the day, it's either fair for all, and it's right for all, or it's wrong for all.
No, I disagree with that totally.
Your honor, I have a question.
Mr. Peterson.
So, when somebody applies for a license, does it get put in, so how does, as a concerned citizen, that they're having a party in Sunset Park, how do they know that it's happening? Is it put in the newspaper? Or is it just put on the agenda?
Your honor, yeah, it's, it's put on the agenda.
So, if nobody reads the agenda, and nobody comes here, I mean, so who really knows that Bar 10 is going for a liquor license to close down the street to have their alive at five session?
If, if they see the agenda.
And who's the, I mean, so the agenda gets mailed out, every once in a while, County 10 will put some...
County 10, I know it's...
Will sometimes put out and say, hey, tonight, you know, this is happening, but other than that, nobody really knows, right?
It's in the paper.
It doesn't go, it doesn't go in the paper? Okay, so, is there, my concern is, we trust our senior staff to do everything, we had a nice, very great message from Holly about how great our senior staff is. I think that the option they have in there was, if it's going into a public place, I think we need to have it, but if it's something that Bar 10 is trying to do in alive at five, or, you know, Bailey's trying to have something down there at his, whatever, but I think if it's going into a city park, I think that's something we need to look at, but the rest of it, I mean, we trust our senior staff to do everything else, but they can't say, you know, hey, this, this is an issue, I think this is easy to go in front of the council. That's just my thought on it.
Well, your honor. Mr. Bailey.
I guess, to me, it comes down to, and we're talking about, open container permits only is what we're talking about, not catering permits, which is where the bar goes and does an event at the fairgrounds, or something like that. The question really becomes the public notice piece, because that's what takes the time, and what's our, Stephen, if I refresh my memory on how quick we have to advertise that, or, I mean, so when's the agenda go out for our meeting tonight, for example? A week ahead?
Last Thursday.
Okay, so, so somebody would have to come in and put their permit in by Thursday morning, or maybe Wednesday?
Yeah.
To be able to be here tonight to get an approval, so that's a week, let's say. I mean, or if you did it where senior staff could do it, they could come in and apply, there wouldn't be any public notification, and I guess, to me, that's the core of the issue, is whether we think open container permits for you going to do a birthday party in the park, or Bar 10 closing down a street to do the dance, I mean, should the public have that week to be notified, so they can show up and put input in, or whether we think that can be just handled on a one-by-one basis? And so, it's, I don't think it really comes down to whether we approve the event or not, because I don't think, I don't remember us ever disproving one, and, and so, it really comes down to the public notice piece of that, and whether the public should have that ability to come and say, we don't want them shutting down Broadway, I have to go home there every night, or whatever, you know, I mean, it...
Your honor, when I was on council before, we had the problem of people coming in every day, not every day, but every once in a while, come in and say, I'd like to have an open container permit. Bang, because we had no control over it. They just wanted a permit, they could come in five minutes before and say, I want an open container permit. I think people should follow the rules. If we state the rules, you follow it. I don't care how humble anybody is, or how sorry they are, you still have to follow the rules. You break the law, you have to follow the rules. City ordinance are in there for a purpose, not to just arbitrarily break them because you want to. Thank you.
Chief, with regards to an open container permit, that includes the sidewalk in front of the premises? I'm just trying to think here, see, okay, so we've got several liquor establishments that have a patio, okay, and they got a fence around it, and that's part of their dispensing area, or... Or that qualifies, it's outside the building, but it qualifies as part of their bar under their license. But if they move-
It's on private property, yeah.
It's on private property, okay? But if they move on to the public sidewalk, then it becomes an open container issue, right?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
I guess I would hate to see all the bars in town spilling over, you know, out onto the street and the sidewalk and, you know, that type of thing.
It's already occurring.
I know, but I mean-
I mean, it's my parking lot. You ought to see my parking lot. I've got two bars there on the corner, and I'm gonna come in and talk to the chief about putting up signs of no trespassing after dark. I'm tired of picking up beer bottles out of my parking lot. I'm tired of having a parking lot for somebody that's not putting money in my pocket. And that's just the way it is.
Your Honor, I mean, that's obviously breaking the law, and that's an enforcement issue. I mean, that's not what we're talking about here.
Oh, no, no, no.
An open container permit, again, and to Holly's point, we are sort of punishing the people that are gonna come to us and ask for permission because they're gonna do it and follow the law the way it is, okay? The guy that's not gonna follow the law, he's not gonna follow it no matter what we say. So I don't think you can bring that into it. It's, you know, the people that are gonna do it right are gonna follow the rules. And whether we say it's a public meeting, you gotta do it a week in advance, or you come and get the clerk and get a permit right away, I don't think that's gonna change it. We're still gonna get the same number of open container permits because they're the people that are doing it the way they're supposed to.
Yep.
So it, to me, it just comes down to whether we want the public involved in this process. And I would guess, I would have to lean on allowing the public to have input. As much as I hate the extra regulation, the extra BS that we all have to go through to get things done, that when you come down to it, doesn't change a bit of what you're gonna do anyway.
So a poll, would that be appropriate?
Yeah, or a motion, or-
For guidance, or you wanna, somebody wanna make a motion?
I don't think we need a motion, Your Honor. I think we were just a discussion.
Leave it the same? That's what, they're trying to get guidance.
Yeah.
Leave it the same? Leave it the same?
Leave it the same.
Leave it the same?
Same.
Same?
No.
Change? Mr. Peterson, does it know?
I still stand by, I agree with what Councilman Bailey said, that it didn't have the time. But, so if we get in the time, does it require coming in front of us? It's where we do punish the person that sits in front of there, or do we just put it in the newspaper? And then if nobody comes in and tosses the city clerk, you know, or calls us, I mean, because people will call Stephen quickly if they don't like something, am I correct? So I mean, if it goes in the newspaper on Thursday afternoon and they don't receive a phone call by Monday morning, you know, is there a reason that the city clerk cannot say approved? I agree that the city needs to have, because if somebody's doing a party at the park by my house, you know, I'm gonna kinda, you know, okay, I wanna know about it, so that way I don't come home and all of a sudden see, you know, cars lined up everywhere and can't get into my driveway. So I, I don't know. Does it require us as a council to make that decision? Or can that be entrusted to our senior staff?
Your Honor, just a point of clarification, though. I mean, if we choose it to senior staff, there won't be any notification. It won't show up on the agenda because you won't be approving it.
But it'll still go in the newspaper?
No.
Okay, so then I do agree with, I mean, there needs to be that notification. So if it can't go in a newspaper, I mean, if they come in and put it in, can we not put it in a newspaper just for?
Well, Your Honor, I guess we could. I mean, we could put that out if we wanted to. But usually we put it on the agenda and it goes out to everybody to see that way. And if it's staff approved, then there wouldn't be any public comment.
I-
One more, one more. Steve, what happens when the newspaper dies because people aren't watching it? How do we notify people then? Do we put that on our, can we put that on our website? Can we publish the agenda on our website so that, like the telephone, we're using 75% of Ma Bell's switchgear is asleep. 25 is only active. That's the same amount. The only people that read the newspaper are my age or older. And so consequently, you're not getting, you're not getting the word out anyway. And I'm for getting the word out, and I know the statute is the newspaper. I know that also. And I know that the open container permit is a function of control. But is there, can't we do a better job of notification so that the person that is more literate on the internet is getting updates versus reading the newspaper?
Yeah, Your Honor, most of the time, we send it out to all the news outlets, including TV. It goes to newspapers. That includes County 10, which is online. Anybody that asks to be on that list, we send it to them, so.
All right, thank you.
I think we've got, I think we've got a majority of support for leaving it alone. Okay? Council committee reports, Councilmember Roundtable. Ms. Gibbon?
I don't really have anything for the seniors. I think I just wanna wait. And once everything comes up and we're, we've got more facts and stuff, I think, then I'll give an announcement. I mean, we did have a board meeting today with the seniors, and then we had the endowment board meeting. So we paid bills, but the rest of it, I think we definitely need to wait until we have some more facts. However, I did wanna give a plug to the new Chopsticks. Got to go there for dinner right before I got here. It's fantastic, so definitely go check it out.
Okay. Been vacant for a while, so that's good. Okay, Mr. Peterson?
Just a friendly reminder, we're getting ready to go back into school time. So as you're moving around the community, start watching out for the little people moving around. Get out there, support the high school and the junior high, the athletics and stuff like that. If you can volunteer, get out there and volunteer. Help the community thrive and give opportunities for our youth to put their efforts towards something other than going out and getting in trouble.
Thank you. Mr. Larson?
The solid waste continues to kick the can down the road, so I'm not gonna get into solid waste. But I am gonna get into, my favorite subject is at 7:15, an airplane flies over my house, and it leaves, and I sure hope that we are taking advantage of the airport service because that beats the heck out of driving to Casper. And the price is right. We need to fill the seats. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, last Monday, we had our Fremont County School District 25 Recreation Board meeting. And all we had there was, we granted some more money for Little League to help pay for the electrical problems they had this summer down there, so. And that's all. We paid bills, and that was all we had.
Okay, Mr. Canaan?
PAWS is having their annual Pearls and Paws fundraiser September 13th. So, excuse me, I would ask people to, again, support that. That's one of their big fundraisers for the year. And just like every other organization in Riverton, they do a good job for us, taking care of those cats and dogs and getting them off the streets. And they're hurting for funds, just like every other organization. I would, I don't have a good number for tickets, but I would say you could either probably contact the animal shelter. And I know for probably the Stock Doc will probably also have tickets on sale.
Okay. Mr. Bailey?
Again, thank you for excusing me for the last few meetings that I've missed. I apologize. I've been traveling quite a bit with my other responsibilities. I did have the opportunity to fly on Denver Air Connections, and it was wonderful. Get a Volcaize-sized can of soda and a real candy bar or bag of chips. It went very smoothly. They were on time. You don't have to worry about overcrowding down on the Great Lakes end of the concourse A in Denver. So there's plenty of room to stretch out and relax while you're waiting for the plane. And it came home on time and was great, so. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
I guess I don't have to put my plug in for the airport again. I've had enough of that. I guess I would like a little bit of clarification from Mary that came under. I just wanna make sure that everyone's fine with staff putting some effort into bringing that forward, not necessarily in an ordinance, but at least as a discussion item to talk about a potential of an ordinance for street furniture and street cafes. Because we really didn't have a chance, I mean, she, she obviously misunderstood what I told her. I said, we have a council meeting tonight, you can come talk about it. But we didn't have anything on the agenda for that.
So the, I was foggy about that. Does this, the city doesn't have an ordinance, but DOT does. And what is that, that they can't have, we can't have furniture out on the sidewalk or signs or can't have encumbrances? I'm foggy.
So, Your Honor, if the city has an ordinance allowing it, that is one of the criterias that then they can have it. But then they have to meet other criteria based on that. So we have ordinances for sandwich board signs, which they are allowed to have if they meet the criteria. That's the same with having a street cafe, which is what they call them. And when I did some research, they directed me to Cody, because Cody was the only one in this region that actually has an ordinance. It was about eight pages long, and it was pretty in-depth. The issue for her is that the bench and the receptacles are all in front of her business. And there's not enough room to allow tables to be put in the front of her business and have ADA-required space of at least four feet and then five feet if you need have for bulb outs. Her recommendation was to get rid of all those. She wanted the city to remove those and put them somewhere else. And my concern is, the minute we start that, we're gonna be moving them all over Main Street because people won't like them in front of theirs. And a lot of these businesses, frankly, are not, I mean, they're not permanent in the sense that they're just tenants renting from here. So we make all these improvements, and then they move or go somewhere else, and then we change that out. And so YDOT says, if you have an ordinance, then you can do it, but you have to have the possibility of all these other criteria. And I was trying to get out of the YDOT, because we met with her today, along with YDOT. The issue is, is from one block to the next block, you have to have five feet straight clearance. You have to envision someone that's visually impaired walking with their cane. They can't see. They can't meander and go in and out, in and out. I mean, for us people that can see, it seems kind of ludicrous. But for the person that can't, they wanna have a five foot all the way through. And so we are already having people, as we speak, put stuff in that five-foot clearance now, even though it's not allowed. We have a couple businesses there that have either put benches right in front of their business, or we have tables. And so I guess the issue for me is, even if we enacted the ordinance, it doesn't solve the issue for her unless you then move receptacles and benches to different locations. And I just, I think, once we start that, we're in the same issues we had with open container permits. But I'm happy to bring up that as a discussion item, to talk about that. And, but I don't wanna bring up something or bring forth ordinances that the council is not interested in even looking at.
My opinion, sir, Your Honor, is that we don't need an ordinance. We'll leave it the way it is now. That's just my personal feelings.
I would have to agree. I don't see anywhere on Main Street that has enough clearance in front of their building to even think about doing something like that and still have a full-blown five-foot sidewalk. Now, if somebody built a new building and they wanted to build it back 10 feet and put a little cafe kind of thing in the front, that's a whole different thing. But I don't see that happening on Main Street.
And is it one writing an ordinance for the three, three and a half months that we can put something out there? Because after about that, you, I agree, I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to change it. If it's not broke, don't fix it.
Got a lot of help there. I guess my thought is that we, the city, what, 10, 12 years ago, spent a lot of time trying to decide whether or not we were gonna have amenities on Main Street. And then, when we finally did decide that, we went ahead and spent cash reserve in order to get it done when we had overruns on the road construction cost and suffered for quite some time, four or five years, before we could rebuild those cash reserves back up again. And so what we have is, I think, a very pleasant Main Street. We have nice lights. We have nice trees. Main Street looks good. And to abandon that in favor of any one single business or make a hole in it, so to speak, I don't think that's in keeping with the rest of the effort that went forward to put that stuff in place in the first place. So I would say that I'm not terribly excited about seeing an ordinance that would, that would change that. There's four.
Just one more real quick. I don't want another ordinance where it's unenforceable. Here, when I was on council before, we passed an ordinance, no signs on city properties, stop signs, telephone poles. It's unenforceable. I mean, we can't have our police going out and checking every sign that's on there for garage sales. And sad to say, I voted for that, and I wished I hadn't now. I just don't see we need another ordinance.
Yeah, Your Honor, the, because right now, we have tables out there. And the way it reads now, it's YDOT enforcing that. If we adopt an ordinance and do an MOU, then it's the city that enforces that. And so I guess I will just give direction to YDOT that they need to enforce that because if we don't have an ordinance, then it's not allowed.
Yeah.
I think that's the way to go. Okay. Mayor's comments? So Martin put in a plug for the Paws and Pearls, and so then I guess I get to put in a plug for the empty bowl. And for VOA, that's the 27th of October. Last year, senior staff managed to collect enough money to put together a table and sponsor a table. And city council put enough money together to sponsor a table. And so that's, I think, I think that's a worthy fundraising activity. We've got quite a few folks in the community that support that. They bring in soup and come and pay for tickets. And last year, I think they raised $10,000. That's not a bad fundraiser for a group. And the whole idea is that it's pretty easy to attend, so that, you know, if you've got a family- it's pretty easy to attend, so that, you know, if you've got a family, you know, that family ticket at twenty-five dollars for dinner, pretty hard to beat the price at dinner like that. And, so it's going to be that evening, the twenty-seventh, it's just before Halloween, so there's an opportunity for kids to dress up in costume and that kind of stuff and get prizes, and, and that'd be a silent auction, so forth. So, the Volunteers of America uses that cash as a match for grants, and so it gets multiplied many times, and, and they're doing a grand job here in Riverton. I don't think anybody criticizes that. So, if you, City Council, I guess I'll be the, I'll be the, the contact person for the council table, and, and Stephen's the contact person for the senior staff table, and so if you'd like to participate in that, you can let us know. Okay? And Mr. Bailey's probably, what, owns half of the Empty Bowl already?
We have a table.
You have a table.
And sponsorship.
And some soup, and...
And we're probably giving them some jelly too.
Yeah, see, so, so at any rate, Bailey's, Bailey's is doing a big deal for them, so they're, they're...
It's a good cause.
Good cause.
And how much is a table sponsored?
Five hundred bucks.
Five hundred dollars.
Yeah, five hundred bucks, so. At any rate, if we all went, you know, that'd be five hundred dollars divided by seven, that wouldn't be too bad, and, but I think last year, we went a hundred bucks apiece, five hundred, one hundred bucks apiece. Okay? So, that was, that was, we had a, we had a really good meeting today, I thought, about the Senior Center. I would, I would like to, once again, publicly thank Holly, okay, for her tenacity on this. This is a very difficult thing, very hard to do, because it's so vague, or the rules under which we operate are so vague, and, and it's been very, very difficult, but we knew that as we were coming down to the wire on this eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, that the seniors were going to have to do something different than what they've been doing. And, and so, she's been really aggressive on this and pursued it, pursued it. The city has increased what we're trying to do to help them make this work, but in the long run, if you don't make some significant change, then things are going to destruct. We don't want to lose the Senior Center, we want it to be a viable part of our community, and we want it to be successful, and, and so, Kristy Skinner with the Division of Aging and Department of Health was here today, we had a great discussion with her, she's met with the seniors board a couple times, we think there's some big changes going to come in the next few weeks in the way that operates. We had them originally on the agenda tonight, but it's a little premature to talk about it, so, should be back in a few weeks, and tell us where we're going. So I think, I think we'll have some resolution to that situation, and things will look better. Not that it'll be immediate solution, but at least we'll be working on it in a positive way, and, and that'll, and that'll be quite a different thing for the city of Riverton since I've been on council. And how about Mr. Martinez, have you ever...
Pardon me?
About Senior Center, has been a struggle, all the time you've been on council, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, okay. Right. Mr. Davis remembers, remembers struggles. Okay, and so, and so, Holly, in her position as chair of the, of the Finance Committee, is on the Endowment Board, and chairs that, and, and has done a great job, and we're going to preserve that endowment for the seniors' use in the future, and we are, and we're going to make the Senior Center function a little bit better than it does. It's a very difficult thing, because it's run by a nonprofit organization, the only, the only thing, the only dog we have in the fight is the endowment and the building. And, and so, it's, you know, kind of, kind of been tough to figure out what our role really is here, and, and so, we're looking forward to some changes over the next month, month and a half there. So I talked about VOA, I talked about, I guess that's, I guess that's what I had to say. Oh, mosquitoes?
Yeah.
Hey, thank you, thank you. I, I do want to, I do want to give you a mosquito report. I'm kind of, you know, Nancy Pirapan with the Weed and Pest sends me the mosquito report every week, and, and I know other people in city staff get it, but we have West Nile virus, positive hits on West Nile virus in two locations in Riverton right now. And so, that tells you that at least a certain amount of the population of mosquitoes inside the city limits are active with West Nile virus. And now, just, not, not finding it doesn't tell you anything, it just says, I didn't find it, but when you do find it, that tells you that it is there, and a pretty good high percentage of the mosquitoes out there have got it, for us to stumble onto it with our sampling process. So, so be careful. This, you know, Culex tarsalis that carries West Nile virus is a sneaky mosquito. This is not the mosquito that chases you around during the daytime and tries to bite you on the eyeballs, between blanks, buzzes in your ears, and that kind of, you will never hear this mosquito, okay? This mosquito rides the door, comes inside, sits quiet and waits for the house to go calm in the evening, and while you're, you know, sleeping in front of the TV set, or after you've gone to bed, then they'll come and take a blood meal. So you do have to take, you got to, you got to pay attention to this. When you're out in the evening, it's hot weather, everybody wants to peel off their clothes and shorts and tank tops and that type of thing, exposes a lot of skin, deep, tastes terrible, and so you don't like to get it in your mouth, and yet it's an effective mosquito repellent, and we really need to, if we're out in the evening, we really need to use that, because West Nile virus is a disease that, that about ten percent of the people that get infected with West Nile virus have significant impact in their, in their lives, okay? Occasionally, somebody dies from it, but the worst, the worst thing is people who have, who have paralysis and, and long-term, long-term disability as a result of that virus. So this is, we do have it in our community right now, we don't have any human cases that we're aware of just yet, but typically, we don't get a human case diagnosed until about the second week in August. Okay? People need to think about that, and, and certainly, we've had enough warm weather that we're there. Because we do have, did get a detect three weeks ago in Riverton on West Nile virus, the city did go to twice a week on the fogging program, and, and that's pretty effective. We've seen a big drop in the number of mosquitoes in the traps as a result of that, but we still have plenty of mosquitoes out there, and twenty-five percent of the mosquitoes that we're trapping are Culex mosquitoes. So there's still pretty good numbers, pretty good numbers of those mosquitoes around, and this will be the case until we have some pretty cool nights in September. It's going to have to get down into the fifties at night for a few nights, that rearranges their thinking, they start feeding on nectar and getting ready for winter. These mosquitoes overwinter as adults, and so they'll be in the storm drains, under the streets where it never freezes, they'll be in the stack, the sewer stack on your house, where it's constantly high humidity, warm, warm air coming up out of the sewer stack, they'll be in those kinds of places, they overwinter, and then next spring, the adults come out and lay eggs, and the cycle starts again, so.
Need to spray the sewers?
Um, very difficult, very difficult to get that all done, and then you've got all those stacks and all that type of thing. Really, really hard to do with this mosquito because of the, its lifestyle. Early in the spring, it feeds primarily on birds, and that's where it picks up the West Nile virus. The birds are the carriers of the West Nile virus, so, are robins, okay, big carrier. The blackbirds seem to be really susceptible to it, so you see dead crows, dead blackbirds, that type of thing, that's because they got West Nile virus and died from it, and, but robins don't seem to die from it, they just carry it. So then the, so that, they and other birds turn out to be the carriers, and then the mosquitoes get it. In the cool weather, it takes a long time for that to incubate, and so it's pretty hard to pass that on, but when we get to August, the temperatures rise, and they're able to, the, the, the virus is able to multiply to the point where it's transmittable in mosquito in about four or five days, and so, it's possible for them to get a blood meal from an affected bird, four or five days later, be able to infect a person, so. At any rate, we do have, we do have West Nile in our community, and, and we need to be concerned about that, it's probably, probably countywide, so we've got, we have a positive in Hudson, we've got a positive in Arapahoe, we have, and we've got two positive trap locations in, in Riverton. Okay? And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
And nobody wants to adjourn.
Nobody's...
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Lee's going to...
Second.
Lee, okay, okay, Lee, okay, and Mike, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye.
Chief?